The most important thing, the bread on the segunda. That's it, that's it make a difference.
Good evening. Welcome to the City of West Miami. Today is Wednesday, March the 4th, 2015 at 7:35. For the invocation, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you, please rise. And let's bow our head this evening and thank the Lord for the many blessings that we receive each and every day. We actually pray tonight, especially for Commissioner Vice Mayor Juan Blanes's mother, who has just undergone surgery and I am advised that she's out of surgery and resting comfortably. May the Lord heal her after a fall that she suffered. Tonight, we ask you to keep our citizens safe and those that are ill and frail to take them under your wing, dear Lord, and to comfort them. We ask for our military personnel. We ask that they stay safe and return home to their families. We ask you for law enforcement officers, so they as well stay safe and may return to their families. And our firefighters. We ask for leadership. We pray for our elected officials, so that all the decisions that they make are in the best interest of the community. And we ask this in your name, amen.
Amen. Chief, a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Present. Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Candida Blanca is excused this evening. Vice Mayor Juan Blanes is excused this evening. Mayor Eduardo Mujina.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Item four, please.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for February 4th, 2015, regular city commission meeting.
Motion, I don't see any discrepancy in the minutes.
Second.
Okay, hold on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item, number five.
Item five, report of the city manager.
Mayor Manager, before you start, I would like to take item... Madam Clerk, if you don't mind reading, item J. 10J or 11J.
Item 10J, report by the office of the city manager in reference to Mayor sponsored City of West Miami Arts and Music Festival by city manager.
Thank you. Before the manager starts, first of all, I want to thank everybody participating in the art festival. I want to thank the sponsors. Very especially, I want to thank, in particular, three people. Ms. Aguilar, for the outstanding work that she's doing in putting this thing together. Mr. Quintana, without this, probably, I mean, he has put a tremendous effort in all aspects. His talent, his artsy part of that is very important, you know, he's dealing with publicity, et cetera, et cetera. As you know, this is something that you have to go out, you have to advertise, so be successful. And also, you have to talk to the right people and you have to bring the right artists, et cetera, et cetera. And finally, Kari Acosta, I know she has worked very, very hard. And I know there's a lot of people that are working on this. I know that later on, the police department are going to work very hard on this. I know that Mr. Penna and his team are going to work really hard on this, and he's very happy about that.
Oh, yeah.
But I know it's going to be a really, really successful event. I think this is the type of event that puts a city on the map. We showcase our city, which to me is a jewel and in the middle, it's a lot of people don't know about West Miami, but they will. And without...
Tell Mr. Q to come on and take a bow.
Oh, Mr. Q, can you come out here? Señor Quintana, puede salir acá por un momentico, por favor?
The handsome Mr. Quintana.
Muchas gracias, muchas gracias por tu esfuerzo. Thank you, thank you very much for your efforts in putting this event together. We really appreciate it, and especially me from the bottom of my heart.
Good.
Thank you, thank you for that. Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your kind words, and I will pass the message, convey the message to Kari Acosta, who's been my right hand, and Mr. Quintana has been my left hand, and obviously yours, because we are an extension of you and the commission of the City of West Miami. So, that being said, I'd like to just go over the details of my report. And this evening, before I start, I'd like to point you to the posters that we put up in front of the dais, as Mr. Penna advised me. I was involved with graffiti as I was putting them on, but I think it's beautiful graffiti. Again, our featured poster for the festival was designed by Mr. Quintana, and it's really caught the attention of a lot of folks out there. We have wonderful sponsors for the event. That being said, I'm sure the time will come where you will recognize those sponsors. We have received $8,250 from corporate sponsors. We received a grant from Miami-Dade County, or we will be reimbursed for an amount of $2,973 from the Miami-Dade County Cultural Affairs Department. The city's contribution was $3,750 from last fiscal year, which we accrued and reserved for this event. And the artist sign-up fee revenue is up to $2,650, for a total revenue of $17,623. Our projected expenses as of this afternoon are as follows. The tent rentals, I think you're going to be very pleased with the tent selection. We are actually bringing in a very classy-looking tent. They actually have a very nice design up on top, and they actually have like a little flag, and they have leg cover, so it's going to be a very classy, refined-looking tent. We're going to use linen in black and white, so that it looks nice and elegant, and so that you don't have all kinds of colors, you know, at the tables where people will place their, artists will place their exhibits. We've got bounce houses for kids, we have a face painter, tables, chairs rentals for the artists, and obviously some extra chairs for those that cannot be standing. We anticipate those expenses to run about $6,500. We've earmarked about $2,000 for the public works team to come in, prepare the part before the event, to be there during the event, and to clean up after the event. Mr. Penna's really happy. We've set aside $500 for the rental of portable restrooms. We've set aside $500 for any event safety expenses. The police department has prepared an operational plan for the event. They're going to try to use their pool, their reserve pools, to cover the expenses from the police department standpoint, and we just have a place marker of $500 in the event that we need to purchase anything related to safety. The advertisement, promotional flyers, the banners, we actually have, we're going to have like poll signs, you know, there are some brackets that you buy and basically use in polls. These we're going to use up in the palm trees at the park. We've ordered Mayor, and I showed you, and I think Commissioner Rodriguez, you've seen those, and I meant to show Commissioner Suarez, I didn't get a chance to do it, but we, Mr. Quintana ordered some beautiful flyers that contain the same information, very colorful, like vinyl, and we're going to put those in the palm trees as early as maybe Friday, tomorrow? Tomorrow or Friday, we're going to put that up, and that's going to be a good tool to advertise the event at the park. In addition to that, Mr. Quintana designed, using our featured poster, a canvas that will sit in the back where the live music will be coming, will be playing from, which is the stage area by the flagpole. We have a 22-foot-by-12-feet canvas, also, again, containing the color and the design of the festival, which should add a lot of color to the event, something very catchy to the eye. We've set aside $2,600 for these expenses. We've got some promotional flyers that will be delivered. Actually, the recreation center staff is working on stapling and putting a rubber band, so that we can put one on each doorknob in every household in the City of West Miami. The flyers are here at the counter. I think I've shared copies of those flyers with every member of the city commission. We've taken into account equipment rental. We rented equipment to assist with the sound, because the park is a very large area, and because it is an open space park, we want to make sure that the musicians that have been retained will project their music throughout the park. The musicians are, it's a group called Raico Torres. We've also set aside a budget to pay for their three-hour engagement, $1,600. We've set aside money to pay the kids from the rec to distribute the flyers, and we've set aside a small amount of, in the amount of $350, to go ahead and spend on promotional expenses. So, our projected expenses as of this afternoon is $15,750, so we're still way below and within our budget, and I think that if any more expenses need to be made, they're going to be minor, but we're covered. I'm really happy. Mayor, I think I even shared with you, Mr. Quintana has designed some ID cards for the vendors, some for the commissioners, for our staff, those that are going to be working the event, and for the musicians. So, we have actually taken a look at everything. We have publicity. There are two radio personalities that have offered to promote our event on a daily basis without costing the city a penny. Mr. Agustina Acosta, who's well-known in the community, has also offered to bring in his radio station mobile van, and actually be on the air live continuously during the event, promoting the event, and get people to come out and participate in the event. I have a call-in to community newspapers, to Grant and Michael Miller, so that they can also feature our information in the community newspapers, which has a large presence in South Miami. In addition to that, I think I shared the posters with you all, and these are the posters that you see here. I've started today, I actually went to Latin American, and we put up some posters over there, and we're going to start basically asking the business community to allow us to display our posters well beyond West Miami. I mean, this is hopefully an event that will bring outsiders, like the mayor said, and we want to showcase our city. The Miami Herald will be running a piece, I believe, next Sunday in the neighbor section on the festival. Rodolfo Roman has asked for information, we've responded to the information, and I think he's gathering some quotes from the artists and the vendors that are going to be participating in this event. So, I think we've hit the ground running without having the experience to put events together. I think we're putting together one heck of an event, and again, I could not have done this without Kari and Mr. Quintana. They are the life of the party, if you want to call it that. So, that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to respond to that. Mayor, I hope we have fulfilled, oh, we have the food truck extravaganza. We're confirming the trucks and the actual food samples that they're going to be selling. And a domino tournament will take place in the gazebo. We're going to be ordering some trophies for the domino tournament winners, and we have a couple of commitments from different cities. Hialeah Gardens, and I believe the City of Hialeah will be sending some of their domino players to the tournament. We have a retired deputy chief from the City of Miami, who has a lot of experience running these. Ricardo Roque will be here. He will provide the trailer, the domino tables, and the chairs, and the domino sets for the players.
Mr. Roque.
Mr. Roque. So, he will be running that with our, with our former retired Sergeant Manny Gomez, well-known in the City of Miami, and Pablo Cantón will be here running the domino tournament. So, I mean, I can't think of anything else unless something comes to mind. Please let me know, and we'll try to accommodate that.
No, I think you're covered. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next item.
Next item, it's the report of city manager. Is there any other item to report, Madam Madam?
Festival, 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 for now.
We're very festive. And next item, item six, report of the city attorney.
There's no report by the city attorney. Next item.
Item seven, report by the city engineer.
Our city engineer will report on it, but it's basically the bids that we received of...
We have an item on that, if you don't mind.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's not in the agenda, from what I saw.
The bid tabulation report by the office of the city clerk regarding the French train.
French train.
Okay.
This is regarding the...
The building department.
The building department.
It's not on the agenda?
No.
Okay.
Those bids were opened yesterday.
Okay.
Mr. Villalobos, in order to add an item to the agenda regarding a bid report, how should we go about it if he has not been included?
Well, it's actually included, because you're making a report, you have a motion in order to accept or not accept the bid, is that correct?
This is another item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is an item that is not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
Well, you can amend the agenda expurgato, and just go ahead and proceed with it.
Okay.
Okay. Again, this is regarding the bids that we received for the building department and facility maintenance building. You have the floor plan there that we had proposed. However, the bids came in way above what we have projected, so we are requesting that they, all the bids be rejected and go out for bid again, under a different scenario that the engineers will explain now.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like for you to hear from the engineers. We had a meeting this afternoon at 2:00 PM to go over some details regarding the project. Do you have a rendering of the building department one for exhibit up here, Mr. Penna? There is a sketch before you, and that's what the engineers will be addressing this evening. If you could actually refer to your sketch, because we have two different issues that we need to bring to your attention tonight.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Good evening, it's Mayor, Commissioners.
Welcome.
Pleasure, pleasure to be back.
Welcome back.
I'm back! So, we're going to do a little bit of a tag team with Frankie. As Madam Manager just mentioned, and also, Mr. Penna, we opened bids yesterday on this design-build project. The bids came in almost twice as much as what we expected, the low bid. The high bid was even, was about 50% higher than the low bid. So, after our meeting today, we decided that we really need to go back and rethink the project. If you recall, originally, this project, and that's what you have in front of you, originally, this project had been designed in phases. Based on the prices that we were, we had at the time, which this was, this is a project that was planned about two years ago, we thought that we could bid everything on one shot. The economy has rebounded, prices have gone up throughout the county, and what we're recommending now is reject all bids and bid the project again, but this time, bid it in phases. If you notice on the, on your, on the floor plans, we had originally planned to phase one, which was the office, office space, and then phase two, which was the maintenance area. What we would like, we would like to propose is to go again for bids, but only bid phase one as the base bid, and have an alternate for phase two, so that we can see broken-out prices for the office building and for the maintenance area. When we were analyzing the bids, the average price per square foot came out to about $215, which is for the maintenance area, we believe that that's quite high. You know, the finishes on one side, you know, on the building side, and compared to the maintenance side, it shouldn't be, I mean, the average price per square foot should have been a lot lower, so we believe that this, with this approach of going back to the original scheme, which was doing in phases, we can, you know, we can, we can stay within the budget.
So, when you said $215 per square foot, you're talking about the low bidder?
The low bidder, the low bidder.
Wow, that's high.
That is, that is very high.
The average of, for the three proposals was $1.5 million, the average price. The statement of probable cause that you're, from prepared, that TY Lin, our engineers prepared, was something in the neighborhood of $667,000.
Six-six-seven, correct.
So, this had real huge disparity, if you want to call it that. It's not as easy or as simple as sitting down with a low bidder and ask him to remove a window or two.
How long, how long the numbers were prepared? How long ago?
Two years ago.
Two years.
Yeah, so there's, prices have gone crazy.
Yeah, two years ago, we were in the bottom of the crisis. Now, rebounding.
Even with that truth, I still believe that the numbers are very high.
The numbers are high.
I mean, especially, I mean, if everything had been office building with the type of finishes that we're asking for, I can, I could justify 220 as an average, but half of the project is a maintenance area, which basically is open space. So, there's, that's why I think if we go with phases, we would, we would see the right prices.
What's the span, what's the span on the, off the top, we have, you know, the span on the, on the bay, the big bay?
On the big bay, we're looking at 48, 50, 50 feet.
48 to 50 feet.
Yeah. It's not, it's not something out of, out of the ordinary either, so...
But Mayor, I think it's a good idea, go with phase one first, because what we must need is the, is the phase one, the working area.
Right.
Is what we need.
Right, right.
Okay, so, any, I agree.
I have a question, I thought that was phase two. Am I looking at something wrong?
Phase one, phase one will be, will be the office building.
Phase two is the motor vehicle garage.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right, and then...
Or the rear, or the rear. It all depends.
Because we would, we would keep operating, we're operating today, which is most of, all the maintenance is done on the, on the existing, on the, on the existing building, the pump house. That's, that's where the maintenance is happening today, so we can, we can, we can keep that operation going on there. And what I would also recommend is to have an alternate bid within the bid, so that we can...
So, you can like to take it or not take it?
Exactly.
Okay, that's a good idea. Okay, so you need, we need a motion, anything else?
May I make a comment?
Yes.
See, that's why we're proud to have this company, because this, Mariano, it's not because you look nice, it's because you are, you are smart. These people are smart and very, have a common sense for things, and we're very grateful with the way you think, with the way you're planning the things. I agree that.
Okay, any...
The proper motion would be to reject all bids.
Okay.
And retain the, go out for bid on another, on the, the same project or a different model?
In phases.
In phases, not a different model, it's the same project, but...
Well, in phases, if you want to put it, but it would be a different model, because you have to separate things.
I'll bid for phase one.
Okay, so I need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Can you take a vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor Mujina.
Yes.
3-0, item passes.
Thank you.
If I may, just want to add one more thing in the report regarding the LAP Traffic Calming Project, just to inform the commission, we had the kickoff meeting this past week, and we anticipate construction to start March 16th, so in a couple weeks. So, and, you know, you'll start seeing the crews coming out, start building the remainder of our traffic calming system, and that's all, just wanted to inform you on that, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to skip to item 11A.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11A, presentation of recognition to Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation for the grant that facilitated the purchase of AED equipment for the West Miami Police Department. This item is sponsored by Vice Mayor Blanes and Commissioner Blanca.
I just noticed that the chief is not...
I am advising the chief, if you would allow us one minute to get him in here, he's outside speaking to the detective.
In the meantime, Mr. Mayor, if I may, on the same items.
Okay, go ahead.
It's really nothing to do with public safety, but I just want to publicly say that their subs are outrageously good. They're like amazing. I first got to know you when I was traveling up in North Florida, because you weren't here, and we saw Firehouse Subs, what is this? We just stopped in, and then every time I traveled North Florida, I looked for you. So, I'm so glad you guys are here now. But are you in Miami or just Broward? Where are you in Miami?
Dorale.
Oh, it's close enough.
So, you don't have one over here in West Miami?
Well, Dorale's pretty close. Wait a second. They are amazing, they're amazing subs. In the new Flagler, the...
Yes.
Where Chick-fil-A is?
Yes.
Oh, my God, that's awesome. Fantastic. I'm just talking about their subs, Chief, sorry.
With that, with that, I'm sorry, the Vice Mayor and Commissioner Blanca couldn't be here, but we have the chief.
I'm going to, the actual presentation Lieutenant Delgado handled, I was in Orlando with Bello when he was getting his award, and where did we eat when we were there? But Firehouse Subs. Coincidence, it was right across from the street from the hotel, and it was fantastic. But Lieutenant Delgado can explain more, because I wasn't present.
Okay, okay.
It was your choice.
Yes.
It was, it was the first time I've eaten there. There was a subway across the street, and he decided to go to Firehouse, so...
Lieutenant Delgado. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, every year, the Firehouse Subs Foundation donates a certain amount of money to a lot of law enforcement and fire departments around the country for them to use for lifesaving equipment. So, this year, we were able to secure a grant with the help of Mr. Robert Ruano, and put in or submit for that particular grant through the foundation. The reason why we submitted that grant was because we needed some automated external defibrillators, AEDs. We had five of them that were very old, we got them in 1997, and they had saved a lot of lives in that time, but technology, with changing technology, you know, we needed to upgrade those. They're very expensive items, typically, an AED will run anywhere from $2,500 to $3,000 apiece. So, with the help of the foundation, we were able to secure that grant, and we were able to purchase five brand-new AEDs for use in our police cars whenever we respond to a citizen that's had a heart attack in the city. So, I'd like to call them up now with the foundation, so...
We used one of those AEDs just this past week. It was utilized on a person, an emergency call, and through the officer CPR use and the use of the AEDs, the person recovered, was transported to the hospital, and last we heard, is doing fine.
Excellent.
Very good.
Go ahead.
All worth it.
Thank you. I just really want to appreciate Mr. Delgado for bringing me here tonight, and, you know, meeting all of you guys is, it really means a lot to us, and the Public Safety Foundation has really helped a lot of people and saved a lot of lives. And I just want to say thank you, and thank, you know, we just really want to appreciate our customers firstly, because they're the ones that are coming in, eating our subs every single day, and donating every little bit here, 25 cents here, dollar here, and they really support us. And what we do is, we want to get that money and bring it right back into the community where it belongs. And it really brings chills to me to know that we had just saved someone's life not so long ago, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I have a question. Excuse me, sir, can you give me the, not only to me, to the audience, the address of your store? I've never been in one of your stores.
You're missing out.
See? Thank you, but anyway, I want, give me the address of you, please.
I will give it to you. It's 3887...
3887.
Northwest.
Northwest.
107th Avenue.
107th Avenue.
And it's right behind the Chick-fil-A.
Have you been?
In Miami, Dorale.
Dorale.
When is the Flagler going to open?
Hopefully, we're projecting in about six months, six or seven months.
Oh, okay. You know, the new shopping center on Flagler?
Yeah, I know, when they text us at Roja.
Uh-huh, there's going to be one there.
Right there, coincidentally.
Was it behind Chick-fil-A, as you said? Coincident?
Excuse me, you said you are behind what?
I took Flagler.
Chick-fil-A.
Oh, but your name is more important.
My name is Mike Alatorre.
And your name, sir, for the record?
Mike Alatorre, and my wife is here tonight, Jacqueline Alatorre, and Nelson is one of our shift leaders.
Is that, is that your store, Mike?
It's our family's, yes.
That one in, in Dorale? That's your family's store?
Yes.
Then one in Flagler's going to be yours as well?
Exactly.
Awesome.
Thank you.
You might have to come and open one in West Miami, sir.
We're trying to, we're trying to reach over here a little bit closer.
Okay, good.
There we go.
We have a lot of projects. Mayor, the certificate is there.
Yeah, let's come forward, please.
We'll go to lunch, I think.
Yeah, we're there.
I've never been there.
Really?
We gotta go to lunch.
A new place to try?
Five places.
Nelson, get the plaque so that it can be read.
I've never been there, have you?
The Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation, Firehouse of America LLC. The mayor and the city commission of the city of West Miami honor the commitment to civic responsibility and communal welfare through the generous donation and sponsorship to the life-saving equipment grant, which facilitated the purchase of life-saving equipment for the West Miami Police Department valued at $10,309, dated this fourth day of March 2015. Eduardo H. Mujina, Mayor, Juan M. Blanes, Vice Mayor, Candida Blanca, Commissioner, Wanda Rodriguez, Commissioner, and Luciano Al Suarez, Commissioner. Thank you.
I'm going to...
Don't be too scared, I'll tell you the story.
Blanca, gracias.
Mr. Luciano, I was taking a video of the whole event, too.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Arcia. Que flaco te has puesto, muchacho.
I know, right?
Oh, my God.
Is that a whole different person?
Yes, he is.
He doesn't blink at the time.
Yeah. I don't blink, babe.
He does. Has a baby, and the baby, how old is he, five? Scary.
Yeah, and he's on a fitness program. Living the dream, like Orlando. Bye, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I will see you there.
Okay, I would like to go back to the order of the agenda.
Okay, next item will be item eight, committed reports before the mayor.
I have no report, I already gave my portion. Anybody else on the committed reports? Okay, next item?
Item nine, citizen presentation, no presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Item ten, unfinished business, none, actually, the none belongs to the item ten, not eleven.
Okay.
Apologize. You want me to follow the order?
Please, yeah, follow the order of the agenda. I believe, if you want to read item B, but I believe this item...
Yes, on item B, I would like to request to postpone this item until March 18th, because Mr. John Mark Girardin could not be present this evening, so I would like to request to deferral of that item until the next commission meeting.
Okay, you need a motion?
Motion.
Okay, or in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Item C, 11C, it's a bid tabulation report by the office of the city clerk in reference to the French drain installation and repairs bid.
Okay.
One moment, please. And on February 18th, 2015, bids for the French drain installation and repairs project were received and publicly opened. The following bids were received. From Decorporation Construction Inc., in the amount of $83,928.50, from Williams Paving Corporation Inc., the amount of $96,770.05, and from Metro Express Inc., the amount of Those were the bids received, and that concludes my report, my bid tabulation.
Ms. Penna, you, next item?
Item 11D.
Okay.
It's a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Decorporation Construction Inc. for the amount of $83,928.50 for the purpose of accomplishing the French drain installation and repairs project, providing for funding from PTP funds and providing for effective date by mayor and city commission.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, on February 18th, we received the bids for the work that we are proposing for Southwest 11th Street between 58th Avenue and 59th Avenue, localized drain there, and also on Southwest 13th Street between 58th Avenue, again, and 59th Avenue, to replace the existing drainage, which is no longer functioning, and replace it with a new system. The engineers have provided the sketches for the work, and they have reviewed the bids, and the lowest bidder is $83,928.50, and we are comfortable that they can do the work.
Okay, Ms. Attorney? Any...
Yeah, upon the recommendation of the administration, you can entertain, accepting the recommendation, provided that you allow 10 days for potential bid protests. So, the approval would be factual after 10 days?
Yes, it was opened on February 18th.
No, it has to be recommended by the administration, from today's day.
Okay, so, the administration recommends it?
Yes, the administration recommends it, we have sat down, looked at the numbers, and we're comfortable with the PTP funds being earmarked for this project, so, yes.
And the engineers have reviewed the numbers?
Yes, thumbs up from them.
Okay, all right, so, I have a motion, any second. Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor Mujina.
Yes.
Three zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Item 11E, resolution of the mayor and the city commission of the city of West Miami authorizing the city manager to expend a total of $34,080.00 in connection with engineering and construction management services to be provided by TY Lin International for the LAP Traffic Calming Devices Project, providing for funding from PTP funds and providing for effective date by mayor and city commission.
Mayor, before you call this item to a vote, this expenses associated with the grant received by the Florida Department of Transportation, as we know it, it's called the LAP Agreement and the TAP Funds, which is for the traffic circles that are engineer briefly reported under the Engineers Report. This would be the engineering and construction management services for the duration of the project, is that correct?
Which is our match.
And that is our required, we have a required match of $35,000.
Any, any questions? Okay.
Motion?
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mayor Mujina.
Yes.
Three zero, item passes. Item 11F, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami rescinding resolution number 2014-62, which authorized the expenditure of $20,000 for design criteria for the project described as public park southwest 12th Street and 66th Avenue project, and adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager the expenditure of $27,000.00 in connection with professional services for design and construction management to be provided by TY Lin International for the public park southwest 12th Street and 66th Avenue project, providing for funding from impact fee parks funds, and providing for effective date by mayor and city commission.
Mr. Mayor, this is the property that the city acquired last year, that sits next to the existing Garden Club Park. This park was bought, this parcel was purchased by the city to accommodate growth by way of the projects that are in the pipeline right now, as we have to do pursuant to the comprehensive plan. You have approved a conceptual design, now we need to go into the demolition phase of the property that sits there, and the design, the complete design, and the permitting for the expansion of the park, which includes, I believe, two or three more gazebo's, restroom...
Two gazebo's, one complete bathroom, and...
And playground equipment.
And playground.
And fencing, obviously.
And a continuation of the perimeter fence.
Right, continuation of the perimeter. This park should, once completed, should really enhance the area, and should serve probably as a domino effect to the adjacent properties. I'm sure that everybody's going to be very motivated, now that they're going to have their properties abutting, this beautiful-looking park, because it's going to be beautiful. And we would recommend to you that you authorize TY Lin to go ahead and see us through the end of the project, that's why we thought it would be a good idea to rescind a partial approval for services by their company, and have them submit a proposal that would encompass from the design process through the end of the project, so that we know exactly how much money we'll be spending.
Yeah, Mayor, I want to comment that this is one of the things we need for the comp plan, to have parks in order to accommodate, you know, the new population we have, the developments that we are looking for now in front of us. So, I think it's a good idea, that park, it's already, we have a small one, and we make it bigger, and it's one of the requirements for the comp plan.
Yeah, it's not only a good idea, but it's a mandate to comply. Can you clarify the, we have 20,000 and then 27,000?
No, we had a resolution that was previously approved for an amount of $20,000 under resolution number 2014-62. We are now asking you to rescind that resolution and allow us to expend a total of $27,000 to do the entire process and see it through the end.
Okay.
So, the 20,000 has not been spent. We will be spending a cap of $27,000, if you want to call it that, for everything, including the inspections, design permitting, everything, until the park is turned over for the use by the public.
The idea is to, this is a design build as well, right?
No.
No.
Okay.
And the...
This is a design?
Design in-house.
In-house, and then inspection as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And by the way, Mayor, this money is coming from the empathy, that the empathy money is allowed to spend it.
Right, that is correct.
This is no money from the taxes, from the residents.
That is correct.
Right.
Motion.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor Mujina.
Yes.
Three zero, item passes.
Next item?
Item 11G, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami declaring city vehicle 1997 Ford F-150 pickup truck and 1992 DMT generator a surplus to the needs of the city, providing for removal from city's insurance policy and removal from the fixed assets, an inventory list, providing for the city manager to sell said vehicles and equipment in a public auction, and providing for effective date by mayor and city commission.
Okay, my manager?
Yes, it's Mr. Penna's item, may I, may I hear to Mr. Penna?
Okay.
As you know, in the, when was it, December of last year, we went ahead and we purchased a new truck to replace the 97 Ford F-150, and now it's become a surplus vehicle, we have no need for it. And also, the generator that we have behind our building that has never been used, I think we received it in 92, and after that, we used it for a couple of hurricanes, and since then, it hasn't been used again. We have no need for it, there's backup generators on this site, and we have another backup generator for the rec center, so, we are, one generator too many, and we would like to sell it off.
Okay, any questions?
No motion?
Okay, so, I have a motion.
Second.
Second, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor Mujina.
Yes.
Three zero, item passes.
Thank you. Item H?
Item H, report by the office of the city clerk in reference to request by the Department of Elections to allow the use of the West Miami Community Center as a polling place. And mayor and members of the city commission, on February 24th, this office received a formal request signed by Penelope Tonsley, the supervisor of elections, requesting to allow the use of the community center as a polling place during federal, state, county, municipal, and special elections. They state that the facility has been surveyed by the Elections Department and is to be found suitable for elections. They submitted a calendar with the 2015 and 2000, actually, I provided the 2016 calendar. They also attached the, an agreement, a proposal with the letter, and for the city to sign, and if you, of course, approve it, and that's why today submitting this as for your consideration, because the use of the community center has been, the community center has been used, actually, last year for early voting, but at least in the years, as far as my recollection, I don't remember having the community center as a polling place for general, state, or federal elections in the past, so, it is submitted to your consideration, the request by the Elections Department.
Okay, thank you. This is an item that, in the past, is a delicate item, because entails a lot of, well, especially the senior, the potential displacement of the senior, and that's something that I would rather have a full commission, to get input from the full commission on this item, and I know we also need some time to contact the Alliance for Age, and so on, and I would like for this item to be heard next meeting. Is there a deadline?
Actually, they don't, they don't have a deadline, I will contact the Elections Department tomorrow just to inquire about any deadline, but they don't, they don't, they don't provide any on the letter or in the agreement, only that if you don't want to be part of the agreement anymore, you should give them a 45-day notice, and that's basically, I don't know if the city attorney has had time to read the agreement and has an opinion, but, I mean, to the best of my knowledge, that's what I could understand from the proposal, from the proposed agreement.
Ms. Attorney?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, and it's something that, you know, you may want to consider during your deliberations. Does this also include early voting?
They don't say, that's a question that we should ask, but I... They don't say, that's a question that I, that we should ask, but I'm almost sure that they are considering early voting also as part of the whole, they don't state it here, but I think.
It's implied.
Early voting is implied, yes.
What, okay.
If I have a comment, should I wait till we bring it up till it's, we have everyone, or?
No, I think you should say your comment now, because I have my comment, I have some comments myself.
It's very, like, it's very vague.
Yes.
I don't, this doesn't really tell me anything.
No, of course.
It's too vague.
I, I'm in totally agreement with you.
Okay.
And, and since it's vague, I think we, we should instruct the city clerk to get in contact with them and get a specific, first of all, a timeframe, you know, a deadline.
Timeframe, early voting?
No, 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 but when do we have to respond, so to make sure that, that we respond to them one way or the other, that's one, and two, you know, dates.
Exactly, when do they want to use it?
Yeah, when do they want to use it?
Perfect, okay.
Actually, on the calendar, two thousand and fifteen calendar, the only, the only day that I see that the community center might be used is, is for the Miami election. On the two thousand and sixteen calendar, we do have our own elections, West Miami elections, and also the primary elections on August and, in August, and general elections in November. So those are potential dates that, that probably they are requesting.
It is, to me, it doesn't clearly say that, so.
I have a comment, like you said.
Want to see it in writing.
Ask the clerk, as you said, ask them what they need, because here is simple, polling, center as a polling place, that means all elections, a polling place, so you better clear with them what they need and come back to us, because I don't.
There's a couple of other things, in order to be in agreement, there have to be a consideration. That's, that's the gist of.
Well, okay.
Contract, okay? So if you're going to call it an agreement, then you need another paragraph as a consideration of blankety-blank. In addition, I have been able to review and their limit, their liability to section seven sixty-eight, two point twenty-eight Florida statute, which is the disturbing immunity statute. That means that if something happens and there is a lawsuit in, in excess of two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars, then the county will be liable for two hundred thousand dollars, and we will be liable for two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, well, that, that's something that, that's a caveat, I guess, that we had to deal with, but I think for the next meeting, to have a more clear understanding of what is it that, if we decide to say yes or no, you know, what is it, you know, and that way, you know, the rest of the commission will have.
We'll bring this item on, on March eighteenth.
Yes.
Keep it simple. No, I don't talk to you, I talk to the clerk.
I should keep it simple, okay.
What do you need, what do you want, that's it.
Elliot Asbell, one five three four five, Southwest Seventy-Seventh Court, Palmetto Bay, Florida, three three one five seven. I know I'm getting older, and I know my mind is getting hazy, but it seems to me, months ago, and I understand what's going on, but it seems to me, months ago, there was, I wouldn't want to call it a request, because the, the tenor of the discussion was really like this was a demand, if I remember correctly, and there was an attitude that seemed to be pretty prevalent, forget about the number of dates, forget about the liability situation, which really didn't come up at that point, all of which are important, but it seemed to me at that point that there was, from the clerk and others, there was some concern, again, about detail, and more importantly, there was a concern of how this would interfere, not like we're saying tonight, in terms of a own election or whatever, there was a concern about how much time would be dedicated to this that was in conflict with our citizens' ability in terms of dates and timing, and I don't hear anything in this that, right now, and including the daisies and mayor's recommendations to the clerk in conversation, I specifically don't hear anything in the instructions about how the, now maybe the intention is, in a full-blown discussion, when everyone's present, and I hope that's the case, but it bothers me that I don't hear any of that, and I'll use the word vitriol, if you will, I don't hear any of that this evening.
No, you don't hear, but I, but I did mention, that was my opening statement, my opening statement was the concern about the citizen, the, the senior citizen, that was my opening statement. Okay, so that, that was my opening statement.
I have long-term memory, but short-term memory.
Since we don't have a full commission, I would like to get more information, because I know that's a concern, and that was my opening statement.
Mr. Asbell, it's not the H, it's ear. You don't hear what he said.
I said I was.
I'm not a manager.
May I ask, in your fact finding that the clerk, or for you to instruct the clerk to also coordinate with the calendar for summer camp, because primary elections usually happen in August, and in August, those are big elections, and if they have, if we need to relocate our seniors, and there is early voting for a period of time, it may intertwine or interfere with the summer camp, so these are all things that I believe you should actually instruct your clerk to report back to you and.
How, how about this, before you draft that long email, or before you get into that conversation, I think you need to talk to Marilee Moriah from, from the center, and also from, from Jim.
Yep, right.
There. Okay? Anything else on the subject?
August.
March eighteenth meeting.
So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To instruct the, the city clerk, okay. I should have said it first, and then, thank you for voting, I'm not knowing for what you're voting. So, next item, please.
Item eleven I, report by the office of the city manager and director of public works in reference to needed office expansion to accommodate growth, present and future, and passport services, by city manager and director of public works.
Mr. Mayor, I, I bring this item to you because the city has to start considering its future needs, not, actually, its present needs and the future needs of the city. Being cautious, because I believe that we cannot dream on, dream on growing to a point where we cannot sustain or have the money to make certain accommodations, but I believe that the time has come to address accommodations in the front office. Fortunately, passport services is something that we have been able to master, we have excellent clerks in the office that are certified for passport services, and we have a lot of people coming. Now, it's like everything, passport services has peaks and it has valleys, there are certain times of the year, and those, that season started shortly after Janu, mid-January, where you're going to see a, a big volume of, of people coming in here to process their passports for their travel plans, and because they're expired, or new kids being born, but everybody needs a passport, pretty much. That being said, our, our residents are perhaps limited from being able to address their, their concerns that they have on city matters, because obviously, our counter is full of passport applicants. That being said, you're also dealing with passport that contains very sensitive information, there are some very difficult cases in, in passports concerning legal custody issues and divorce issues and things that I believe merit a little bit of private time with the clerk that is helping them, issues with parents that have situations with kids, and, and so on. That being said, I think that the need for the front office to grow is here and now, I think we need to start addressing our, our needs. So we asked Mr. Penna to get with the engineers and basically tell us how, without losing the concept or our deck or look, what we can do to the building to bring it towards the front, into the courtyard area, without really disturbing the flow of the office right now, because we would have absolutely nowhere to work from. And so, Mr. Penna, we'll talk to you about how we believe we need to grow and what would be suitable for the city to pursue in terms of additional office space. Keep in mind, each project that has been approved will probably bring, and I'm talking now, going back to the residents, we're going to have probably another thousand or twelve hundred residents in the next twenty-four months, pretty much coming to live in the city of West Miami.
Eighteen hundred will be in three years.
In three years, eighteen hundred, those are folks.
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred. Those are people that are going to come in here and apply for occupational licenses, they're going to come in here and apply for passports, or they're going to come here because they have a need to see someone in the police department, and obviously, their department is separate and apart, but I'm telling you, there's going to be an impact here, because our community will grow. Not that we're going to annex or anything like that, but obviously, these buildings will have, will house new residents, and new businesses will come to the area, there'll be occupational licenses. That being said, I think the time is here and now for us to start addressing a concept for the office. We may need to increase staff by at least one more full-time person, we may need to make some changes to staff and perhaps switch some key personnel to the front office and some to Mr. Penna, and, and another clerk to Mr. Penna's department, to accommodate the issue of the building department and code enforcement, because they do come in hand in hand. So we do envision some changes are going to be necessary for us to be able to maintain the level of service and accommodate future growth without hurting our existing population. That being said, I'd like for Juan to address you on what we talked about in terms of concept and growth.
Mayor.
Mr. Penna.
May I, I have a question before, Mr. Penna. This is a capital improvement, right?
Yes, sir.
I think the money from the impact fees can be used for this.
Correct, sir.
Okay, good.
Mr. Penna.
Remember, we have new projects coming.
Yes.
How can I forget?
Once we have enough impact fees, we do it. Basically, the, the passport has its peaks and valleys, but what we've noticed is that during their peaks, there's not enough lobby area in, in city hall for all the applicants that come in to, and wait in line to be serviced. So the intention was to remove the, that commission office that's in the lobby of city hall, that way giving additional space to the lobby, and creating off one of the windows to the west, a new area for passports, and relocating the, the office of commission that we're removing to the, also to the west, to the backside southwest corner of the, of the proposed project. This would, this actually takes out the landscape that we have in front of city hall to the brick, and, but at the same time, it doesn't affect it in a way that it would be aesthetically unpleasing to the building, in fact, I think the, the continuation of the brick and the, the additional metalwork that they provided in the sketch actually enhances the building, while keeping the area that we dedicated a few years ago for the fountain that we have to the west.
For the memorial.
The memorial, keeping that area intact, and, again, providing a replacement office for the one we're taking off, and providing for a passport office that'll allow the privacy that's deserved while they're doing the passport applications.
I, I have a question, Mr. Penna, and, and in line with what Mr. Asbell mentioned earlier, I don't know if I'm getting old, but, what happened to the police department on the second floor, what's going on with that?
The, we're looking at a grant from USDA to maybe match impact fees, and I don't believe we're ready for that yet, that, that's our initial assessment. I think that we need to have a little bit more money in impact fees, given the prices that we have seen in construction costs with a bid opening that we just reported on a couple of items ago, I don't believe that we are financially prepared to address the second story on, on the police department just yet. I mean, you're talking about a two hundred and fifteen dollar per square foot, adding a second story to a building, I, I'm, I'm not comfortable, Mr. Mayor, right now to, to address that. That's going to take a lot of money.
Okay.
Maybe when we have another project in the pipeline, we can start to talk about that portion of the work.
And can, can you refresh my, my, my memory? Was there a layout done, anything on, in, in terms of the police department, second floor?
Yes, there's a, there's a model that was developed for future expansion of the, of the second floor for the police station.
And, and, Mr. Mayor, it's not that, and I don't want to tell you that it's being shelved, no, I, I, my recommendation would be that we wait a little longer, because I don't think that it would be wise for us, from a financial standpoint, to tackle these three areas right now, because we're not there yet.
I'm, I'm in total agreement, if anybody's frugal about that is me, I mean, when I became the mayor, we were very close to the red, and, and, you know, we were able to, you know, to bring it back to the black, but, all I'm saying is, is, there's, there's one thing that, that we have to recognize, you know, and going back to what Commissioner Suarez mentioned, you know, the eighteen, eighteen hundred people, whether we like it or not, I mean, we, the, the police department, it's going to have to increase, I mean, if, if the services are not there, then, so, and I know maybe the money's not there yet, I, I understand that, but at least we have to start thinking from a master plan point of view and, and, and start contemplating that.
Yes.
And then furthermore, you know, that building, and this is where I, my, my head comes in, you know, it, it's a building that, it has a style, that unfortunately, some years ago, when the community center was done right next to it, doesn't, I mean, doesn't go with anything, you know, and I, I, the reason I, I got up over there and went and I saw, I, I think is in keeping with the style, I think is enhancing the building, I think is actually bringing, you know, back the historical, you know, that, that building has a presence in, in, in time that, that it needs to be preserved, and, and whatever we add to it, it need to, it needs to enhance it, whether it is the second floor for the building department, that addition in the front, I think is very well done, and, and somehow, go back to that community center and, and bring it into keeping with, with the style.
Correct.
Because it's not, at all. I don't know where that man's roof came from, but I, well, I know where it came from, let me stop right there. We, we accept donations.
Yes.
So, anyway, Ms. Aguilar, thank you for, and I know, I know the, most of the time, you're the bearer of bad news, so, but, let me, let's go back to a little bit of history when, when we, we, we had a stumbling block with the building department, the building department was not going to happen because money, and you have shown that the building department is, so far, has been successful, and it, so, let's, let's keep an open mind on that.
Definitely, you know, I, I certainly don't want to be the one telling you, we, we cannot do this, I'm just saying, I think we need to address some immediate needs, I think we need to plan and structure our growth according with who we are, based on size, demographics, and financial status, and, and that would be my recommendation for us to stay conservative with our feet to the ground and a level head as we bring these projects to your attention.
Okay.
And for your approval.
And I'm just going to throw one more thing on the pile. I know it's important to have a presence, meaning having a mayor. I know it's important to have a precedent, meaning having a mayor's office and a commission and so on, but that's something...
Words out of my mouth, that was my comment, but go ahead, because I'm going to add to that.
Okay, so I'm going to stop by the Commissioner Rodriguez, go ahead.
Commissioner had a comment also, but I have a comment as well.
Ladies first.
No, 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 by all means, okay. Since we're talking about redoing the office and things like that, and again, this is just a suggestion, I know we, two of our colleagues are not here, but I have some thoughts and comments on the subject as well. I know Mr. Quintana is actually working from up here in this little closet area, and I believe we actually have a detective who works up here as well. What is this little office? We use this for something?
This is the detective office to the back of your community chamber here, and we have the room where we keep the video equipment, where we televise our meeting, and Mr. Quintana is working up here.
He's working up in office.
That is correct.
I know we have some space downstairs that is designated for mayor and commission. I'd like to see, maybe entertain, either perhaps giving up some of those spaces, if they're not being utilized on a daily basis, to the people who will utilize them on a daily basis. I know we need storage room, there's a lot of people downstairs who need space that could use, it could be much better utilized than empty all day, designated for commission and mayor. So just throw that out there, see what you guys think. I just would like to see it, you know, utilized on a daily basis, especially now that we're redoing things, this would be the right time to talk about it, knocking down walls and stuff like that. So, Mr. Suarez, what do you think?
No, I think that the main service, if you put in the balance, the passport service and the police service, according with the mayor, I agree, is more important, the police service than the passport service.
No, I'm talking about giving up the offices that are designated for commissioner and mayor that are not used on a daily basis.
Let me tell you, you see these plans? It used to be rooms there, when the expansion downstairs, they would make some commissioners' space, because commissioner, if you have somebody visiting you, sometimes you need privacy.
Right, couldn't we use the conference room?
And then, let me tell you, and then you need, for a visit, if a resident's coming to visit you, you want to read, you want to, whatever you want to do in privacy, and agree with the city business.
Right, no, of course.
And then we have there two small offices, and the partition was taken out and making a conference room downstairs.
Right, but I'm saying, couldn't we use the conference room if you wanted to meet with a constituent?
I didn't finish it.
Go ahead.
Then that was converting the conference room for the public work and the engineers, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
Now, in the new building, it's going to be a conference room for that. So downstairs, where the big table is, assume the building in the back will be done, that space will be not necessary for the conference, because the conference will be there, so that space can be used for the things.
Well, no, the conference room downstairs should stay, because I know the city manager uses it a lot, and we could use it as well. It could be a shared space.
It actually, the commissioners do use it as they wish.
Okay.
It's a different, no, but let me, it's a different way to accommodate spaces. It's a different way, yes.
Okay, good. So we can come to terms on something. Good.
All right.
One more comment that I wanted to add.
Yes.
And if we're going to adopt this in the future, in the near future, which, as Ms. Aguilar stated, there's other projects in the pipeline, if we, in adopting Ms. Rodriguez's suggestion, the immediate need that we have is that lobby area. If we could take that office, remove that office, and just increase the lobby area right now, that third commissioner could also have use of the conference room until the new offices are built.
Correct.
Which is maybe six, nine months, a year at most. So why don't, if you're all comfortable, or if you want to wait for the other commissioners, why don't we remove the one that's in the lobby so that the lobby problem is addressed as soon as possible?
Immediately. That has an immediate need.
I'm in agreement, but I think we need a full commission to, you know...
Did I make a comment?
Yes.
According to Yolanda told me before, Commissioner Blanca, she used that office for her meetings or whatever, and she was not, she's not happy that the office be removed.
That is correct.
Because there is where she, residents come to talk to her, she has the privacy to have a room to talk and so, so it's better that Commissioner Blanca be here.
No argument. Okay.
Right.
Anything else?
Would it be your desire for us to bring the item back for a full commission, to get everybody's thoughts? I mean, obviously, if we're building and thinking about the future, I think that you all need to have input into what is done here and how we should pursue with those plans. So if you'd like, we can bring it back as another discussion item, so we can talk about the concept and see if there, so that we can at least get rolling with the plans. We can also instruct Mr. Ruano to see if there are any grants out there. USDA, which is the United States Department of Agriculture, has, sometimes they post or publish or advertise some grant opportunities that we could conceivably match with impact fee money, then we can take another approach and expedite those plans. But you have to have something in place to work with to apply for the grant. So I'd like to bring it back to you for everybody's input and consideration at the next meeting so that we can start to address these issues.
Yes, and that was a good time to discuss, since we are going to be doing construction, a good time to discuss the change in the offices. Perfect time.
And at the same time, we can bring back the police department concept rendering. I mean, we have a tendency of bringing things, and because they take so long, sometimes people forget. I believe Juan, I believe Frank and Mariano, you all have a concept, I believe it's here, and I think we should bring both items up. These are matters that we need to address sometime in the near future.
Perfect.
Okay.
Bring it back.
So, we are working. We are diligently planning for the future, but obviously, these things take a little bit of time.
Perfect.
I'm sorry, that is better than that. We can do better for the police department.
You want break too? Break would be nice.
Right, but I'm talking about the style. You know, it needs to be, it has to be more in keeping. And I know you have to work with whatever's there already, so...
They even have a second store.
Yeah?
They even have a back. Can we get Firehouse to build a third story for a sub shop?
There you go.
We'll give them the land.
All right, all right.
Okay, so we'll bring both reports back to you at the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay, go to the order. Anything for the, go to the order. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Okay, all right.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night. Okay.
Thank you for entertaining us. We're not busy.